Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome us all to the Roseville Area School Board Regular Meeting for Tuesday, March 19th. I called order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Director Bogashevsky.
Here.
Treasurer Park.
Here.
Chair Anderson.
Here.
Director Goggins.
Here.
Director Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Chu is here.
Great, thank you. Okay, any agenda adjustments for the evening?
There are no agenda adjustments.
Thank you. Under announcements, comments, and recognitions, we have some wonderful, fantastic guests here this evening. I think we'll start things off with the Roseville Area High School National Merit Scholar. Pretend it like.
I'd welcome Ben to the podium. Actually, come to the table, please. Join us at the table. Welcome. It's my honor to introduce Ben Lee, a senior at Roseville Area High School, who has been named a National Merit finalist. And what does that mean? According to the College Board, last year, more than 4.5 million high school juniors took the PSAT. Of those students, only 7,500 students were named finalists. That's less than one-fifth of 1% of all students who took the PSAT. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
To the chair.
All right.
Yeah, so have you decided yet what you plan to do after you get out of high school?
I'm planning to go straight to college, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology.
Wonderful.
Hi there. Just a question, is it true that your work with the Fire Bears is solely responsible for you being here today?
Okay, sorry, I can't speak. Sorry to cut you off. Sorry, my bad.
No, I'm just, I'm playing around. Oh, you're with the Fire Bears Robotics Team?
Yeah.
So, first of all, you know, big fan of the Fire Bears Robotics Team, and you guys have done some excellent work. What's, what major are you, are you thinking about?
Industrial Engineering.
Nice. I, I think, I think Dr. Chu is going to answer next.
That was my PhD.
Oh. Oh, cool.
Yeah. Georgia Tech.
Congratulations. Anything you want to just let us know, or just your experience, or this process?
If you wrote something, please fill in.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Give me a sec. Good evening, members of the, members of the Roseville School Board. I am credibly humbled and honored by this recognition. While I truly appreciate this acknowledgement, this achievement is a confirmation of the support and encouragement I have received from my teachers, counselors, and friends throughout my academic journey. I am grateful to this school board for creating an environment that encourages academic excellence and provides students like me with the resources and opportunities to succeed. I am excited about the possibilities that lie ahead, and I'm committed to making the most of every opportunity that comes my way. Thank you once again for this honor and for your continued support for, of students in our district.
Wow.
Thank you.
I have one more. I'm going to break. I'm going to call out your father. Congratulations.
Yeah.
You must be very proud, and I know that you possibly had a lot to do with his success at his studying over the years, so thank you.
Yep. Very, very worthwhile. And if you ever, if you ever want to come back and be a teacher, please, just come on back to Roseville Area Schools.
I'm in, okay.
Well, mic's it, that's what I was going to do.
Right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the 2024 Schmidt Music Band Educator of the Year and Students in our All-State Honor Jazz Bands, our, all kinds of honor bands, I will say. Pretend it like.
Yeah, I'll let everyone come to the table before I read the intro. Jason, if you could go to the podium, please, and then Joe and students to the table. Any students you'd like to bring up? The magical podium.
Jason has a magic podium.
If there's not enough chairs, just grab some more and bring them forward. There's room for everyone. If everyone can make room for all the students around the table, squeeze over everybody to make room. No one needs to sit in the back row. Come on up. There we go. We can just share as folks are talking, right?
Also, students, when you're talking, make sure you're talking into a mic.
All right, now I would like to introduce Jason Ratliff, the Retail Sales Manager for Schmidt Music, who is joining us this evening to present a much deserved award to one of our wonderful music educators, Joe Churchich. Welcome.
Thank you, and, and just to keep this kind of clear, concise, and short and sweet, I'm going to read, so you can get out of here. I have a tendency to just kind of wander, as I am now. So, hello, my name is Jason Ratliff. I'm with the Schmidt Music Company. I'm here tonight because I have the pleasure to recognize Joe Churchich on being awarded the Schmidt Music Educator of the Year. This award of remarkable achievement comes from a process by which an educator is chosen from three fields, band, orchestra, and choir. The selection process starts with hundreds of nominations from across the Midwest, five or six states, and it's pared down and picked by a panel of educators. Being nominated by colleagues and then by being selected by last year's winners, this demonstrates a testament to Joe's outstanding contributions and the high regard in which he is held within the music education community. A unanimous decision further underscores, and that's right, it was picked unanimously, underscores the consensus among his peers in regarding, that regards his exceptional quality as an educator. Church, Joe Churchich's passion for music and commitment to nurturing the talents of young musicians have left a lasting impression on countless students and colleagues alike. His dedication to the craft of teaching is undoubtedly deserving of this prestigious award. Please extend my heartfelt congratulations to him on a well-deserved recognition, Schmidt Music's Educator of the Year for 2024.
All right, look at that. Joe, you have the floor. Is anything, we could ask Joe some questions with the students, or?
You want to introduce the students?
Are you going to put me on the spot now?
They probably could introduce themselves.
Yeah.
So, I asked the students to come with because really, none of this is possible without them. I think this belongs to them more than it belongs to me. I did want to just, I'm not going to read this whole thing because we don't have time, but if I can find it. I, I did, I, I just lost my mom about five weeks ago, and so I did want to just dedicate this to her because she supported me in my musical endeavors more than anybody in my life. My dad came to appreciate me being a music, musician and a music teacher later on in my career, and he would often chaperone jazz band trips to the Minnesota Zoo, but it really was my mom that pushed me into it, and then every time I doubted whether I should continue on my career path, she was the one that said, no, you were meant to do this, so keep doing that, keep doing what you're doing. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I'm not here because of my successes, I'm here because of my failures. You know, when I graduated from University of Minnesota, Paul Hack, who was the, the music educator, professor of music education at the time, had a running joke where he would give all of the music education teachers a diploma on the way out and say, congratulations, you, you are now minimally equipped to do no certain amount of harm. In other words, you don't know what you don't know until you've been out there, and so, you know, I think about all of, all of the things that I've learned from and all the people that have supported me. I'm looking around the room at people that I've, have been my administrators who have supported me, and people who are wearing the Rosz Band sweatshirt in the school board that have supported the, the music department, and, and that's why I've been successful, is because of all of these guys and my mom and all of the people in the, in the district admin and school board and everyone else. So, really, I want to thank you guys for this as much as, as Schmidt and, and all of the other people that have been there for me throughout the years, so thank you.
Thank you. Students, anything you?
Do you want, I, I'd like to hear your names if you could start, please, and what grade you're in.
And what instrument you're playing?
I was going to say that, too.
My name is Erin Wald. I'm in seventh grade and I play alto sax.
My name is Spencer Gahn. I'm in eighth grade. I play the alto sax and the clarinet.
My name's Phil Hug. I'm in seventh grade and I play trumpet.
My name is Ronan Keel. I'm an eighth grader and I play trumpet.
I'm Isaiah Garrett. I'm in eighth grade. I play baritone and valve trombone.
There you go.
I'm Anders Lenhart. I'm in sixth grade and I play percussion.
I'm Shahana Saka. I'm in eighth grade and I play trumpet.
I'm Riley Wald, and I'm in eighth grade and I play piano. Thank you.
Anybody?
What school are you at?
Joe, thank you for being here.
Sorry, go ahead. I was trying to be nice, let other people speak, but since no one else wants to speak, let me just say, thank you for everything you, you've done, you know, for these kids and the kids that have come before. I have been a big fan of this music program, and I, I do stand by, when I say to people that, you know, Roseville Area Schools has the best music program in the state, you know, hands down. I, I have been very fortunate to have raised my favorite music teacher. My, my oldest will graduate this year from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln with a degree in music, music ed, and, and that was because of the people that they met here through this program. And so, I, I thank you for being part of this. You had mentioned that, that this is, that this award is about the people here, you know, please, and, and, and I thank you, I thank you for that, but it doesn't happen if very special people like you aren't making a difference, so thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate you being here under difficult circumstances, your passion, dedication to the school district. I mean, I, I think it's legendary. I've, I've heard of your name ever since we moved into this school district, so it's just, thank you, thank you again, what an honor. Thank you, guys. Thank you, all of you, for being here.
It's a wonderful tribute to your mother.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I may, Carrie's made a request, our Communications Director, if we could please grab a very quick photograph with this group, and then Ben, if we could do the same with you, could we do that quickly, maybe against this wall, Carrie, or wherever you like this? Okay, any school board member who would like to be in the picture as well, let's, let's briefly step over here.
Where are we supposed to be? Yes, or? Okay, charge on in there, kids. Get on in there. Get on in there, you guys are in there. You're more first. If you can see me, I can see you, okay? One. Oh, I've got to get. All right.
How about, what are you going to add?
Yeah.
A lot of pressure to get pictures with other people.
Okay, sort of.
She's good.
Turn sideways a little bit.
All right.
Thanks, everyone. Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, guys, thanks for coming. Thank you. I'm so excited.
You know, it used to be people don't even know what he did.
So, we're going to continue the meeting. Director Bogashevsky and Director Johnson? Thanks, Melissa.
Colleagues.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in the agenda, summary of community input received for action items. I did not receive anything specific to tonight's agenda. Anybody?
Nope.
All right, that moves us to the consent agenda. We do not have any retirements this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second, right, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is passed, and reading gifts this evening will be Director Goggins. Thank you, Kitty.
Thank you. We're as fortunate, as always, we're very fortunate with our community being generous towards schools. Betutetja Education Center received from Monarch Health Management, funds for sponsorship for Shawn Johnson's Big Band Experience. Edgerton Elementary School received from Eagle Brook Church, funds for the community needs. Falcon Heights Elementary received from Stuart Parker, funds for student meal debt. Parkview Center Schools received from Your Cause Blackbaud on behalf of Valde, Valde, funds for the principal discretion. Roseville Area High School received a number of gifts, one from Heather Wally for funds for the weight room, from Rosz Girl Soccer Booster Club, funds for developmental academy coach. Agroll Queen, Agrolls for the PEBHIV fundraiser. Stacy Tidbell donated funds for Family and Consumer Science Department, and Bobby Alcott also funds for the Family and Consumer Science Department. Thank you to all the contributors that help our schools have opportunities and resources.
Thank you, Director Goggins. All right, moving on to reports and non-action items. Up is our intent to issue long-term facilities maintenance bonds. We have Director Sherry Thompson and Jody Zespa from Ellers will be joining us.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, yes, you have a, we have a familiar face with us this evening, Jody Zespa.
In the nice new space.
In the nice new space. I said they, Ellers and Jody specifically worked on this project.
Yes, yeah, we're going to kind of switch gears a little bit for this one, but yeah, well, it turned out so fabulously, we're excited, yeah.
Right, we are very excited about that. I think all of the board members know, you approved a long-term facilities maintenance plan annually. Part of funding that plan is we do a combination of levy as you go, and then we work with Ellers to help us structure debt or sell bonds, so that we can do a lot more now and rather than deferring it later. So, as a part of the levy process last September, you approved issuing bonds, long-term facility maintenance bonds to fund the projects in '25, '26, let me get my ears straight. So, you had authorized that at that time, so now we're getting ready for the bond sale. So, this is informational this evening. I'll let Jody speak to that, but we are looking at selling $17,345,000 in, in bonds to fund our, all of our renovations at EDW over the next two summers. So, I will hand it off.
Thank you, Sherry. So, in addition to your annual levy that you approve each year, we do issue bonds usually every other year, just to save on cost of issuance, and that cadence works out pretty well when, in conjunction with the MDE process, too. You also do still get a little bit of state aid as part of this program, so you still qualify for about $200,000 of state aid, so the state helps a little bit with financing these projects, which is great. So, with that, I will just kind of highlight a few things in the pre-sale report that you have in front of you. On page one, just pointing out that we're financing the deferred maintenance projects that are included in your 10-year plan that you approved and that was approved by the Commissioner of Education. So, they need to approve your plan every year, they approve the issuance of bonds also, and so both of those approval processes were completed along with your resolution last year. So, after you took action on that, then all of that got submitted to MDE and they approved moving forward. On page two, I'll just point out a couple of things. The rating that you'll have, we will be working with Moody's again on your rating, and you actually get two ratings on your bonds. So, the first rating is your state credit enhanced rating. All districts in the state of Minnesota get that nice, high AA1 rating, and that's based upon the state's credit rating. So, the state, as you know, is currently in excellent financial condition. They have a AAA rating, which is the highest that Moody's gives, and so under the state credit enhancement program, each school district just gets one notch down at that AA1. But that's really helpful to you in getting more underwriters and investors interested in your bonds, and they guarantee the payment of your debt should you not be able to make a payment, so it makes it even more secure than the general obligation debt that it's already being issued under. Your underlying rating has moved up, so you're currently at a single A, too, so we've been excited to see some progress on that over the last couple of years, so just to point that out again. And then in the middle of the page, we will be soliciting competitive bids like we always do. Right now, we've been getting a lot of demand for municipal bonds, and so interest rates have come down a little bit as compared to last fall. They went up to a little bit higher levels, but now they've come back down nicely in the new calendar year. And then we'll talk a little bit about the premium pricing, that is, there's some language included on that, and then the bottom of the page, we are always monitoring your existing debt for any refinancing or what are called refunding opportunities in the public finance world, and you guys have done that on a number of occasions and saved money for your taxpayers, so just know that we're always looking out for you on that. We're in communication with Sherry and Jenny on that on a regular basis. So, nothing right now, but we'll, we'll always stay on that. On page three, then, a couple of regulatory requirements. Page four, the other service providers that are working in conjunction with us on this issue, so Kennedy and Graven as your bond counsel, Bond Trust Services as the paying agent, you're required to have a paying agent as part of the state credit enhancement program, and then the rating agency is Moody's. On page five, we show steps in the process, so the resolution, as Sherry mentioned, was authorized by you last September. We're presenting the pre-sale report tonight, just so that you have some updated estimates going into the bond sale, and then we'll be going through a due diligence call to review the official statement. That is like the prospectus that goes out to investors, so we'll be scheduling that for the week of April 8th, along with another call with the rating agency. We'll distribute the official statement on April 11th. We're scheduled to receive the bids then on the morning of your April 23rd meeting, and then would present those results to you that evening, and scheduled to close on the bonds on May 16th, so that's when you would have your funds available. So, we just have a few financing schedules attached, so page six is the sources and uses, and you'll notice the power amount of the bonds at $17,345, we've been getting very large premiums on bond issues lately, so this is our best estimate of what we expect to see the underwriter offer us in addition to the power amount of the bonds. That can be used toward projects. So, you'll see in the uses of funds section, issuing $17,345, we're expecting to have about 18.5 million available for projects, and I know you guys have a long list of, there's been a lot of projects accomplished, but there's still plenty to do, so that'll be welcome news if we do get that sizable premium, which we expect to, it won't be exactly that dollar amount, but we expect it to be pretty sizable. Page seven is the schedule of payments, so principal and interest payments, and we're expecting to pay it off relatively quickly. You've had some nice growth in your tax base, and so we can fit this into a pretty short bond term and still keep your tax rate nice and level. And you'll see that on page eight, there are lots of numbers on this page. I'll just draw your attention to the upper left-hand corner, the interest rate we're expecting on this bond issue is about 3.41%, so we've been kind of planning for 5% rates for a while, we still have those factored in for the future, but it's looking like we'll, we'll be around, under 4% for sure for this bond issue, which will be great. We show your tax capacity value, changes in the values, your existing debt, the lease levy that you have, and then future debt, and in the, one of the tiny columns here, you can see your estimated LTFM aid and how that's changed a little bit over time, but around the $200,000 level right now. And then finally, the right-hand side shows the tax rates that we expect over time, and you can see that a little bit better on the chart on page nine, where we're showing your tax rates for your capital and debt levies, so not all of your school taxes. School taxes, education funding in Minnesota is complicated, school taxes are very complicated, so you have two different tax bases that your taxes are spread on, so we can't put it all on one nice chart, but these are the majority, a big share of your overall school district levies, and this is the, these are the levies that we monitor to keep things nice and stable for your taxpayers. So, with this issue, we're still expecting the tax rates to be nice and level for a period of time, and then we have a nice dropdown, starting with taxes payable in 2038, which provides some capacity for future needs. We certainly have some flexibility along the way, too, if, if some needs arise and you need to take a look at some financing, but for now, we just got, we have that nice level tax rate until that point in time. And that's what we have as updates. No action needed because you guys have already taken action last fall, so really, just an informational report to kind of show you how things are looking now that we're getting closer to the timing of the bond sale.
So, April 23rd will be the, the action date?
Yes.
Got it, okay. That'll be exciting.
That'll be exciting. Maybe not as exciting as our visitors before me, but yes, we'll try our best, yes.
Well, I just want to thank you for your expertise. You've been a great partner. Your communication is excellent, just really, really appreciate you and the relationship you certainly have with Sherry, along with Sherry's good work. And then I was wondering, Sherry, if this would be a time, could you just give comment to the inflation on what $18 million can buy us in terms of EDW compared to five years ago?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point, and that's why it's, it's also important to see, as Jody had pointed out, as far as how that levy impacts our taxpayers. But when we did our facility study back before the refer, building, referendum in 2017, we were estimating that we, an elementary school, to rehab an elementary school, would be about eight or nine million dollars. By the time we started with, as far as deferred maintenance, we knew we had a lot of deferred maintenance. I believe that when we started with Birm Hall, it was just under $10 million. So, now our construction, our total costs, like at EDW, is, is about $17 million, because we saw double-digit, 30% inflation in construction. While that's stabilized, we don't necessarily see those costs declining, but that has, and it has had an impact, and that's part of the reason also that not just timelines and trying to squeeze a project in during the summer, during that summer period, to complete an entire building, but also to spread that cost across two years, because those, those costs have almost doubled.
Thank you.
Is that part of the reason why we also go for bonding rather than waiting for the money, so that we can do it earlier, so it doesn't continue to increase inflationary costs?
That's part of it, and, and right, and just to complete, and, and it's also nice to be able to complete a building and then move on, and especially for our summer programming, because we could have buildings torn apart for multiple years, but this way, we're able to focus our summer programming, we're able to accommodate our students and our programs in the summer, and if we can finish up at a building and then move on to the next one, it makes it much easier for programming as well, but the, the cost is a factor.
Yeah, and I think the other thing that we talk about is getting that money upfront and then spreading it out over time, really spreads it across the people who are benefiting from the use of those facilities. I mean, if you, if the taxpayers had to pay for it all in one year, right, that would be a tremendous amount of, of money, but kind of spreading it out over time then kind of spreads it out over the people who benefit from the use of your facility. who benefit from the use of your facilities, right, because they're well-used by all of your community members. And you enjoy nice, low-interest rates as tax-exempt borrowing with general obligation debt with that nice state credit enhancement guarantee. So, so it makes sense to, to not put it off and try to piecemeal it over a number of years to fit it into that type of schedule. This just makes a lot more sense financially.
And then as we get the tranches of the cash, right, and I think you advise us, too, on what, what do we do with it? Or do we stick, we don't just stick it in a 0.75% bearing checking account over an affinity plus, right? What instruments do we use? I'm just curious. Does it vary depending on?
So within your investment policy that's approved by the board, you have some options. So important is security, but you want liquidity, right? Especially if things change as part of the construction schedule. So all of those things are taken into consideration. Right now, treasuries are yielding pretty high rates, especially some of the shorter-term rates are even better than the longer-term rates. So kind of, kind of a mix, and those are pretty liquid. So I think that's one option that's been pretty helpful.
Yes, and we, we work with Carl Sanderson, too, right? So we kind of know our draw schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's easier.
Try it pretty quick.
Also on long-term facility maintenance, because of the timing of the project. It's not, you know, five years, four years. So, so that is very helpful, knowing what our cash needs are.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
I'm thrilled with our, our A2 rating. We as a board, we have that goal of making sure that that unsigned fund balance, you know, reserves are going up and up. That's got to help in this case.
Yeah, that's really what was holding you back from getting a higher rating for Moody's. And as that has improved, you've seen the improvement in your rating, which has been fantastic, so.
And we'll continue to push on that.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for having me here. This is just such a beautiful facility. I'm so happy to see it. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the school climate report, we have Jake Von Delindy and Melissa Sannick here. Thank you.
Thank you for having us this evening. As, as you heard, we are, we're here to do the 2022-23 school climate report. And I'm Jake Von Delindy, Director of Student Achievement. And along with me is?
Melissa Sannick. Familiar face. Good to be the Assistant Superintendent for Rosaria Schools.
And thanks for having us this evening. We'll walk you through the information in the report. We're first going to start off with a slide that highlights our district goals and key strategies. And the areas that you see in TEAL are the areas that are really impactful for this report. So deliver a challenging, joyful, and safe learning environment. Support learner resiliency for student social and emotional learning and mental health. Building a culture of belonging where all students feel welcomed, included, and safe. Partnering with families in the community to support student success and cultivating and maintaining community trust. So in this year, there is three sections to the report. We're going to have some information from our tripod staff survey. We'll walk you through some of our discipline, our student discipline referrals and suspensions data, and then introduce to you our social, emotional, learning, and equity survey. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Melissa.
All right, thanks, Jake. So one way that we measure school climate is through staff stakeholder feedback. We do that using the tripod survey, which we've been using since 2018-19. The results that we're going to explore this evening, as Jake said, are from the 22-23 school year, so it's looking back. So as a reminder, last year, we implemented some improvements to the tripod survey. You see them listed here. All staff were invited to take the survey. We're able to sort the data now by licensed staff and raider support. We added some new questions, and there's a logic model, so the staff get the right questions that are more inclusive of raider support staff as they're taking the survey. There's an option at the end of the survey to sort the results for, if staff identify as BIPOC or if they choose not to, it's an optional element. But then we can sort the data by BIPOC staff taking the survey. We're also able to separate the feedback by principal and associate principals, and there is a comment box that has limited characters that ask questions regarding school leadership. So the data is broken down into the following categories that you see here. Evaluation quality, quality of professional learning communities, professional development quality, school leadership, and school-wide academic press, and organizational effectiveness. It's also good to know that the scores for school leadership and school-wide academic press are averaged together to produce a school's organizational effectiveness score.
I'm sorry, what is school academic press?
It's about like our, how we're moving forward our academics, like academic high expectations. Maybe another word.
Perceived rigor in the school.
Yeah, yep.
Got it.
Good question. So what I'll do is I'll share some data trends for each category, and then I'll close with some insights after you've had a chance to process the different categories visually. You're also going to see comparisons across years. So the comparisons, and I apologize for how small that is, as I see it on the big screen, right? But the comparisons start with 2018-19, and then they go to 22-23. So even if you can't see the exact numbers, you're kind of seeing that trend over time. The scale ranges from one, which is the lowest, to five, which is the highest. And then I'll also highlight a strength in each category. So what you see here is, as it relates to evaluation quality, one element that was a strength in this category is the criteria on which I'm evaluated is clear. If we go to the next category, this is the data for quality of PLC use time. PLC stands for professional learning communities. A strength in this area was we look at student work and brainstorm together about how to help students perform more successfully. Next is PD quality or professional development. A strength in this category, which doubled from the year before, which I thought was interesting, is this professional development helped me to better meet the learning needs of my students. Next is this around school leadership. Two areas of strength in this category that were actually tied for the element that came through the strongest was school leadership supports teachers in their efforts to improve teaching and learning, and school leadership is willing to have difficult conversations to improve teaching and learning. This next one here is school-wide academic press. A celebration in this category is teachers here have strong skills to produce meaningful student learning. And last is organizational effectiveness. A reminder that school-wide academic press and school leadership are average to produce this category and have already highlighted strengths in those two areas. So now that we've kind of seen like this balcony, high-level overview, I'll share some additional insights. We've got the data sorted into three categories based on significant to less significant changes. We'll start with the quality of PLC time use. Like I said, PLC stands for professional learning communities. We trended down in this category. This was actually the biggest decrease that we saw of .36. This was an outlier in the data. PLCs were really a focus area for us as a district from about 2018 to 2021. As we focused more on AVID and English Language Arts and grading for equity, this is a reminder that we also need to keep that momentum that we had going around PLCs as standard work. We've done this this past year in principal meetings, but we'll also look ahead to what this could look like during the 24-25 school year as well. New this year, as I mentioned, we're also able to sort our data by BIPOC staff. When sorting the data this way, school leadership increased from 3.78 to 4.12. This is an increase of about .42 and would be our highest scoring category and increase. This also connects to our strategic plan, goal to retain BIPOC educators. And then organizational effectiveness also increased from 3.72 to 3.92 when sorting by BIPOC staff, which is an increase of about .2. We also trended down slightly, and when I say slightly, I mean by like .07 or .08 in the following categories. School leadership, evaluation quality, organizational effectiveness, and academic press. This is something to keep an eye on as it's kind of an indicator of our overall culture and climate. We've explored this in more details with principals and with individual schools as well. And last, regarding the tripod survey, in the area of professional development, we remained in a similar position as we have the previous year. This is our lower scoring category. To help with this, we have provided professional development on how to lead high-quality professional development for our administrators and teacher leaders as part of our own school improvement plans and for our administrators at our instructional leadership meetings. So with that, we'll pause on the tripod survey and kind of pivot to focusing and transitioning around student discipline referrals and suspensions. Yep, I can pause.
Quick question before we move on. The percentage of staff that took the survey from, from year to year, is, do we have that information or?
I'd have to look, like, what you're asking is how many staff actually participated in the survey?
Well, I can, I, percentage is fine, because the number of staff could change from year to year.
Yeah, I don't have it on my fingertips, but I can find out.
Okay, because I, I, I'm curious, well, as I, as I look at, at the, the changes from year to year, they're, 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 they're small-ish, because we're using such a, you know, we're going from one to five. But it would be interesting to see if there's any correlation between the percentage of people that actually turned in, you know? But that might have something to do with it.
We also encourage principals to provide time at a staff meeting, so staff are able to take it during the contracted day. Something else that I'm very interested in that we don't yet have from tripod is nationally normed data, our comparison data, because we're really just able to compare schools to the district or the district to ourself over time. And I heard from them, heard back from them again just yesterday, saying they're still exploring that organization. They don't have it yet. Now, prior to tripod, we used to use, what was it called? Five Essentials. And Five Essentials did have nationally normed data, but their price tag was also significantly higher. So pros and cons to whatever survey you use.
Sure.
When you look at the percent participation, it would be also interesting to see how many people were comfortable identifying as BIPOC. Is that percentage similar to what it is in the population? Which could mean, if it isn't, that they either didn't identify or they didn't participate. Obviously, we wouldn't know which, but just some insight around that? I'll let somebody else ask.
Yep, no, I think, I think that was actually my question, too, right? Like, who actually participated?
Right, and I'm, I can visualize the dashboard that I can see, and I don't have access to that data from my lens, but I'm sure they do with my colleagues that I work with through tripod with. So I'm sure we can find that out.
And so I just want to clarify, when you say significant or somewhat significant, that's significant, not statistically significant.
Nope, it's just significant in looking at our own data. Jake and I had the same conversation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just want to make sure that we are not talking about statistically significant.
At what point in the year is it given?
Right about now. Right around that spring break time. And we try to give it around the same time every year, so we're comparing kind of apples to apples. Because I think if you ask staff to take a survey in September, it might look different than December than it would look in June. So that's why we have a radar on spring break.
Said by June, they're all just really tired.
You mentioned that raider staff were offered for the first time to participate in the survey. When you reported results, were you comparing raider staff to, were you incorporating raider staff this year to last year when it was only teachers?
Oh, that's a good question. Yes, this year, everybody who took the survey is included in this analysis.
You may want to look at teachers, just so that you have a comparative, to see if those trends that you're observing are the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're lumping, because you're lumping the other ones, the extra ones.
Right, to see, to see how raider staff affected the overall results.
I also would have to go back and make sure, because it's a logic model, so raider support staff may not take the same survey questions as teachers, like it, it's kind of responsive. So for example, there's questions about collaborative teams and PLCs that raider support staff probably wouldn't get based on the way the logic model is set up, but teachers would. So it's a little bit.
It would be interesting to hear how they differ in some other perspectives also, I mean, to get the results for both groups. You were mentioning you look at differences within the district. Is that particularly insightful? Has that been a useful tool to help further development of particular buildings?
I think where it's most helpful is in two ways. One, for school improvement plans, because staff, like the leadership team and the staff and the principal will look at this around like, what's going well, what do we need to do better? So for example, one school, they noticed like everything scored kind of in that same like higher realm, and then PLCs were an outlier. And they're like, oh, well, we need to do some, we're going to add some elements to our school improvement plan around professional learning communities to kind of include the, or boost up the rigor in that. So I think that's one way it's used. And then I think also in principal evaluation, every principal gets feedback as a part of their evaluation around strengths in their stakeholder feedback and then opportunities for growth as well.
Thank you.
I think the board feedback has been really good. We'll continue to add more information to the report. I just want to thank Melissa, like usual, anything you touch gets better, and this certainly has gotten better over time with your leadership. And I would agree that the percentage of staff taking the survey is very high because we push it into the day when they don't have students. So you will see that result when we're able to report that back out. I had one more thing I should have written it down. I write most things down, right? And I think, I was going to agree with you that, that PLC piece, what happens, and you can disagree with me, when we add initiatives, like a real hardcore focus on, like you said, literacy and AVID, people feel the weight of that. And so what is going to shift? And we, I think we're seeing a shift in PLCs, so.
Agreed.
Thank you for that.
I guess my question is, we are guessing what might have shifted in PLC? Do we, are we going to do deeper dive from the street data sample?
Yeah.
Right? Like, what happened?
Here's what I think the street data would show. I think it's about letters. And I think it's about principals trying to create space and capacity for teachers to engage in that training. And so I think that's, that was the like tension was between those two things.
It would be good to validate that, right? If you talk to a few teachers, it's like what is actually happening?
And I remembered my last point was that around that street data. Melissa, you also, am I correct, incorporates tripod data into a principal evaluation?
Correct.
And like you said, that's school improvement plan? So there is meat to the information as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, we will then transition to student discipline referrals and suspensions. So we'll start off with office discipline referrals. This slide shows ratios, and the target ratio is 1.0. That would be proportionate to the amount of students, meaning the referrals for their demographic would match the student enrollment demographic. Anything without a data point means that we just didn't have enough students to report it publicly, which means less than 10 students. You'll see this impacts the data we have on American Indian students, which is the lighter blue line. Here are some of the things that we noticed about the data for our office discipline referrals. One, if we look only at our BIPOC students as a group, that's the dark blue line, we would see that it is slightly over-referred, but it's important to look more closely. Otherwise, it might be easy to miss the disparities. So the referrals for black students, the purple line, are twice the proportionate rate, and have shown a decrease the last two years, but this last year trended up slightly. American Indian students, the lighter blue line, are also a smaller number of students, so it's expected that we would show greater variability because it's a smaller group. Also, the sample size was too small, so we don't have data for the last two years that we can share out publicly. Our white students, as the turquoise line, and Asian students, the red line, they are both under-refered for the proportionate amount. Referrals for Hispanic students, which is the green line, have trended down in this year at 1.0, which is proportionate to the student population. This is the same data, but the previous slide was duplicated. That means it's the total number of referrals. Unduplicated means it's the number of single incidents by one student. The data doesn't look all that different, but we still wanted to share it with you. This data is the same as the previous slide, but it's the total amount. Again, anything left blank means we didn't have enough students to report it publicly, so that means less than 10 students. What's important to note is there is a significant decrease in the total number of referrals. If you compare 2018-19 to 21-22, this, that year, there was a decrease of almost 2,000 referrals. We saw a significant decrease. Last year, there was an increase of about 250 more referrals than the year before, but it's still a significant improvement compared to previous years.
Is that due to the pandemic or what?
That's really hard, yeah, that's really hard to say, because if we look at those numbers, it was the, like, the rebound in there? I don't know if you have thoughts around that?
I, I do. So we actually left out the pandemic years, so, so 19, 20, and 21, sorry, 20 and 21, because they were so different in terms of like, we were in person and then we were also in hybrid. So we left those years out and then, you know, have comparisons between 18, 19, and the 21, 22 and last year as well. The, the feedback that we get when we talk with our principals is that, that there is still a lot of, a lot of behavior and a lot of needs that are out there, and there's just more complicated situations that are, that are happening with students. Maybe not more, but just different. And I, I do think that's an impact because of COVID and being out of school for a certain for a certain amount of time as well, too. And just coming back to, to a different, different environment, so.
If we look at the 21, 22 data, we did have less school days that year. Maybe not to significantly impact the numbers that greatly, but we went between synchronous and asynchronous learning a few different times that school year. And also, we were suffering, again, that chronic absenteeism problem. We'll, we'll bring that to the board this spring for discussion, but that also impacts referrals.
As we look at that significant jump between 18, 19, and then what we have in 20, then following two years? Because both of those are significantly lower. What would you say is the main cause of that? Have we changed our criteria for referrals? Have we changed how, I mean, how we deal with referrals? I mean, what, what do we believe was the cause of that?
Yeah, I think that's really hard to answer. I think it would look different at different schools, right? Like you could talk to schools that have like SEL increases in staffing or social, some of that social worker support or mental health support that was pushed in, like that could be a decrease. It could be at some schools, I know they have some specialists that focus on social and emotional learning. So it could be many different things that can contribute to that. It also could be restorative practices. So I think it looks different at different sites. I know that was something that we tried to kind of get like street data around more so last year. And that was some of the feedback that we got. And we are looking a full year back, right? So like I would want to go back to principals and get more information on what, what did, like what did shift or create that change?
Certainly is a call to action, a students' belonging classroom. So that is.
Right.
That is our call.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
So akin to the, like the Tripod data, is there any, is there any national data that we can kind of see how we compare?
We have, so we, we do have some comparative data that we used this year. So that was a request from the school board last year. So we are actually looking at our numbers compared to the state data and also our numbers compared to some comparative districts over the last few years. I don't have national data, but I do have Minnesota data.
Okay.
We'll get that in a couple of slides. But national data, that's a good question, I don't know.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we are going to transitions from office discipline referrals to suspensions. Again, our goal to here is to be at 1.0 to prevent racial disparities. You can see that that's the case for our Hispanic student, that's, that's the green line. With our BIPOC students, the dark blue line, not too far off the mark. Multiracial is a category, the orange line, that was recently added and also trends higher than it should be at 2.0. But it is down from 2.3 from the 21, 22 school year. Black students are the purple line that is still disproportionate, meaning there are more suspensions for our Black students than there should be based on the number of Black students enrolled in our schools. And white and Asian students are disproportionate, but from the opposite perspective, as there are less suspensions for white and Asian students than there should be based on the number of white and Asian students enrolled in our schools. This slide is unduplicated data. We see similar trends in this data. And if we look at the number of suspensions, you can also note an increase of overall suspensions of about 90 suspensions when comparing 21, 22 to 22, 23, but still an improvement from roughly three years ago. With that context, Curtis, we're off to the comparison data. So if you look at this, this is our suspensions compared to the state. As you can see, for the most part, we have less disparities by, in our suspensions by race compared to the state, with the exception being the multiracial category. I also think it's important to note that in the state of Minnesota, the state of Minnesota, American Indian students are suspended at a higher rate than any other racial group. This has implications for us as we need to do all we can to ensure that this is not the experience for American Indian students in our schools. To continue with comparisons, we're going to take a look at comparable districts. When we do that, we notice that Black students are suspended at the most disparate, disparate rates. The average is 2.3, which is almost two and a half more times than the proportionate rate. Unfortunately, if you look at Roseville, we are above that average in the 21, 22 school year. Multiracial students are also suspended at a much higher rate than expected. Asian and white students are disproportionate in their lack of suspensions compared to the overall population. The overall rate for BIPOC students is around one and a half times the proportionate rate, which is why, again, it's just really important that we look at it by race and ethnicity as Asian students are typically under-refered. So I'll close by just sharing some insights and then I can open it up for questions and turn it back over to Jake. But I want to talk more about how we're going to move forward towards our goal of eliminating racial disparities. And to be transparent, I will not be the educator that I want to be until we have eliminated racial disparities in our data. So here's some of our next steps in, well, first, let me go to our insights. If we look at a three-year trend, both the number of referrals and suspensions have decreased. That means students are in class learning more, which is where we want them to be. And while there is variability in the discipline data, white students are consistently underrepresented and Black students are consistently overrepresented. Black students and multiracial students are the only students overrepresented in our discipline data. So here are some of our next steps in how we're going to move forward. This year, we're reviewing Policy 520 with the District Safety and Security Team and also with the Equity Advisory Council. We're also putting together a Supporting Student Success and Non-Exclusionary Discipline Committee to look at concerns and how we can replicate success from some schools to all schools. This will be a co-facilitated team by myself and Director Thomas in partnership with EMR. We are also working to build a better system for restorative circles. We have collected names of circle keepers from each school and plan to send a group, it started off as 30, now I think it's up to almost 50, to MDE, to an MDE training this summer. That way, we'll have more staff trained in circles at each school. And part of that learning is also about what does it mean to be a restorative school? So not just circles, but it's a bigger vision. We're also in the process of building a multi-tiered system of supports that will have clear expectations for tier one, social and emotional learning and interventions. And to build on that, social and emotional learning is also in that curriculum review cycle. So with that, I can pause for questions and then we'll turn it back over to Jake.
Couple of questions, how this all works. So is a suspension a subset of referrals? So if there were 50 referrals for a particular cohort and, and five suspensions, does the 50 include the five suspensions? Okay. So it's like, it could be a pathway, like if I'm a student, I could get referred, 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 and finally maybe, like how does it, like how does a referral?
So there's office, yeah, like, and I think part of it is if we break it down by secondary and elementary, it might, it might look a little bit different too. So in elementary, students are much more likely to be, to receive an office discipline referral where you're referred to the office. That's different than a suspension.
Yes, right.
So those are two sets of data, right?
Right. Well, so my question was, because I looked at, so I looked at the most recent year, 2023, for the number of duplicated referrals and then compared that to 22, 23 for the column that showed the number of duplicated suspensions. And if, if you take the, the white students, there were 579 referrals and 53 suspensions, that's roughly 9%.
Oh, I see, so you're looking at how the referrals can lead to a suspension.
So white was 9%, and Black and Hispanic were over 15, close to 16%. So that would suggest that regardless of what is happening within the referral world in and of itself and whatever's happening within the suspension world in and of itself, there seems to be a greater propensity to result in a suspension among Black and Hispanic kids than among white kids. Because the percentage is like 9% to 16%, that's quite a big difference in terms of the cohorts of all referrals, that many more being suspensions for Black and Hispanic students. But I, I want to make sure I'm understanding that that's actually true, given how it all works, just mathematically. See what I'm saying?
Just, I, I can give some secondary experience. Referrals would not be a subset of the suspension, right? So at the secondary level, we really only would suspend for those bottom-line behaviors that really won't result in a referral, right? Because it would be a student fighting, bringing a weapon to school, distributing chemicals. And those things are on the spot, moved through an administrative process without a referral. So hardly ever in my experience did a referral lead to a suspension.
Okay, that's good to know.
From a secondary perspective.
Right, because it, it means that it's not true then that a disciplinary process around a particular student is moving more quickly to suspension.
Right, we, we wouldn't accelerate the discipline because of referral.
That's what I, that's what I was, okay, thank you.
Good question.
And I, I think you might have been going here next, but is there, is there a way in the future that we could get that separated by secondary, this information, secondary versus?
Yes, I.
Just, just to be able to speak to.
Yeah, it would look very different, elementary and secondary. So there is, there's very few amount of students that are suspended at the elementary level. Much more at the secondary level. So it would look, it would, it will look very different when we see it. And there might not even be enough reportable data to provide for elementary. And so that's typically why we put it together. But I, I certainly will look at that.
Well, that, and if, but if you were able to do that for, for suspension and referrals, then.
Referrals for sure, we can do that for.
We can, we can know explicitly if we're comparing apples to apples or not, just, yeah.
Yeah, I, I've been sitting with a major discomfort as to what we are trying to do. Because where discipline and behavior is concerned, what you want, what, I'm, I'm going to speak out loud and it might not be all in process. What you want to do is to say, yes, there's disparity, right? So if, if two students misbehave in acts and one group of students are constantly more punished than the other, that's disparity. Because in a lot of ways, we want all of them to have very low. See what I'm saying? There's something about that that is not sitting right with me in terms of how we're comparing. It is not as if we want more white students to be, you know, because the whole.
No, no.
You know, getting to one, right, being at one. So I do wonder whether there's another way to look at it where you're looking at the behavior, right? Because ultimately, it's about for the same behavior, what is happening? That's what you want to look at. See what I'm saying? Not, not so much that we are lumping everything together and say, yep, this, this group of students never get referred or because they don't have that, the same behavior. So if the same, the same behavior is treated differently, that's the disparity that I'm interested in.
Right, and I'll further complicate that because I think context matters.
Yeah.
So I could have a student, regardless of race, and this is like, bring a knife to school and come to the office in tears saying, we had Boy Scouts last night and we were whittling and I didn't know it was in my pocket and I don't know what to do. I'm going to treat that very differently than a student who comes to school with a knife that has intent to harm and has made a threat and says they have a knife in their backpack and they do. Right, so even in that, it's the same behavior in the sense that there was, they both brought a knife to school, but the context was very different.
Oh, absolutely.
So I think that comes into play as well.
Yeah, so for example, if, if there are two students who brought it accidentally. Accidentally, and we treat one as if, well, no, we don't believe you because of your skin color versus another group. That's the disparity that we want to really get at, right? What is the bias that we are getting at about why, why we treat a certain student differently? Or the other is like, oh, that kid couldn't have done that. That's a bias, right? Without even understanding, you know what I'm saying? So, so that's a part of me to say, is there another way that we look at that? So that we are looking very clearly at the behavioral context, of course, a situation, let's say situation, right? Situations that, that, that students get, that, that raise a red flag. And are we treating those situations differently? Because then it gets that, you know, how are adults treating those situations and looking at the students differently?
I think the only way that we will find that answer to your important question is when we are more aligned in our behavior systems, to which is the goal of your work this spring.
And I'm not saying this is easy, but I'm just kind of, kind of shifting how we think about it. Because otherwise, it is not like we are trying to achieve academic success. So we don't want the disparities, so we want one, right? But here, it's like, this is almost more reactionary, right? It's a, it's a different, different way of looking at data, right? I mean, one data is like, we do not want a disparity. And so we want to achieve that, you know, one, but not in, in, in kind of behavioral. I want it all to be low.
Yeah, average be like a zero.
Exactly, zero, if you can, right? So we, we don't want you to look as if somehow, somehow, yeah, just the way we look at the data, right? Then the, the white and the Asian data feels like, oh, they are low, so we need to think about how do we refer. No, of course not, right, of course not.
Right, and that, that's definitely not what we're, what we're looking at. But if you had 10 referrals in a school, you would want those referrals to be equally distributed, correct? Across our racial lines, if that's what we're looking at. Like, we wouldn't want all 10 to be Black students. We wouldn't want all 10 to be white students. So we should say that, you know, if we are truly an equitable school district, that we would have those distributed by the certain number of, of students by race in our school. If it, if truly we're an anti-racist district. So that's where the 1.0 comes from. So you'd say, by the percent of the student. We're not saying we want to refer more students who are white or Asian because they're below. We just want to say that when we're referring, we're looking at that in a way that, that is not targeting one or two groups of students, like what, what is currently happening. And so that's opening our eyes to disparities that are saying, there's something happening for our Black students and our multiracial students that aren't happening in our other groups.
I mean, I agree, it's just about how do we frame it in a way that, so for example, if, if the goal is only 0.3 for every group, then you say, why is it not point, I'm making this up, 0.3 for the other group, right? That's a disparity.
Right, and, and what I'm getting at too is, what I really wouldn't want to have us report out is to say, here's what our white students are, here's what our, here's what it is for our Black indigenous and students of color as a group, because that also hides some disparities as well, right? So when we see those at, you know, 1.3 for BIPOC students, that hides some of the, the things that are happening behind that as well, too. So I, no, I hear you and I, and I agree as well. That's very hard to pull out.
It's very hard.
So I don't know if that's even possible.
This is where it's really, this is where you, you talk about street data, right? Understanding the why, right? Understanding what is, what is happening that, that result in those, those numbers on both ends. Sorry, this is kind of like.
Oh, let's give Maddox a chance.
Do we know about students who have IEPs? Can we track that to see if it's any different?
That can be another data point within here as well, too. Absolutely.
We can plan to include that in the future report.
I mean, the other thing is the data, the data, and it kind of gets what you're saying. It, it doesn't really give us any indication of causality.
Right.
And that could be very subtle and very more entrenched, right? Because it's not like if Rose is a teacher and two kids behave the same way badly and Rose has some unconscious bias against the green one versus the yellow one. It might not even be that. It could be, well, if more green kids are acting out. Why? What's, what's, what's the culture, what's the environment? Why do they, why do they feel they can or should or have to or need to act out in a class? Why do, why do kids in a certain cohort feel it's okay or, or they need to bring a knife? You know, are they afraid? Is it fear? Is, you know, I mean, what's the environment? So it'll be very, it's going to, it's difficult to get it causality because it might not be individual bias of, of, of staff. It could be kids reacting to their perception of the environment they're in. And then them reacting to that in ways that, that then result in a referral or a suspension.
Right, I also think.
Which is a long-term, that's, that's, that's what we're all about, right? The whole anti-racist culture.
I also think that COVID changed the landscape and just like adults, adult well-being, I think has shifted in our world. I don't think that's unique to like our school district or the state or the country we live in. I think that there's still like lingering effects of that, that we're, you know, seeing students grapple with. And we live in a world where there's mental health concerns and disabilities that manifest. And so I think that it's. And so, I think that it's about, you know, being both proactive and as responsive to really have the well-being of students. And ensuring that we're doing everything in our power to not perpetuate stereotypes and bias and, and the disparities that schools were built on. Schools were built to advantage some and disadvantage others.
Absolutely.
Um, and so, that's not necessarily the fault of anyone at this table or in our schools, um, but it's our responsibility. Um, and so, that's kind of where our, our like intersection point is with principals and with the work that we're doing, um, with the committee in partnership with, um, EMR as well.
Thank you for that robust conversation. That was good. Uh, so, our last part is just our social-emotional learning and equity survey. And, um, we can continue on to that next slide. Um, we did a, uh, we conducted a survey pilot last year for equity and, um, SEL information. And we were able to, and we've wanted to do that for many years. There's been like a, a metric that we've wanted to do and, and have tried to work with a lot of different, um, entities that had different ones, but none that we felt like had the amount of validity and reliability that we were looking for. Um, and we actually did get one through, um, the University of Virginia and working, we were working with some, um, researchers at the University of Minnesota who had connections to the University of Virginia, who were actually conducting a really big survey out east, um, with a large school district. And so, we have been working with them to hone and create, um, a survey. Their, their survey was a hundred-some questions, and we honed that down to twenty to thirty, um, something like that. Um, but the survey is broken into two main areas. The first is, um, students answering questions about themselves and their experiences in school, including their social-emotional learning competency, um, experience with bullying, and their perceptions of equity. And the second part of the survey asked students about their school experience, their teachers, um, and their, and their perceptions around equity. Um, and we did learn a lot from piloting that survey last year. Um, we gave it right at the end of the school year, and we learned we didn't provide enough time for students or families to opt out. Um, we provided a lot more time this year, um, at least six weeks in advance that we started messaging out to our families in our district newsletter, as well as our school newsletters. We also received feedback from some of our, um, from our teachers, especially at the elementary level, that said they'd like some of the terms that were used in the survey defined for students in a way that they could, um, provide some understanding and just how to walk students through the survey. So, this year, we did put in a, um, administrative guide, um, to help students walk through that and help teachers, um, be able to provide that. And we received further, further feedback from, um, teachers and families that some of the language that, um, were in the question and items needed to be tweaked, because it was hard, discussed, uh, it was just hard to understand or get at what that, um, for students to understand what their, the question was asking. So, we worked with the University of Virginia to tweak some of those as well. So, that was some, some positive changes. So, looking at, um, the survey this year, it's actually being, um, it's being conducted this week as well as last week. Um, and we are planning to have that continue on, um, as being in March, um, timeframe that will provide that each year, kind of like the tripod survey. Um, and we do have it as a metric or a gauge, as in many parts of our strategic, um, district's strategic plan within those five goals. Um, we also continue, um, to want to use that di- uh, data for metrics within our achievement and integration goals. Um, and we've written that into our MDE plan. Um, and we also plan to continue to use that to get some trend data, um, over time for our school improvement planning, for curriculum review, um, and both elementary and secondary to be able to use some of that information that we can continue to use. And especially those years and off-years when we don't have the Minnesota Student Survey data, as like this year. So, we don't have that, um, that student, um, climate information that we, that we sometimes get from that student survey every three years. So, this'll be a good interim, um, survey that we believe we'll, we'll have.
Well, I'll, I'll just start with, thank you, Jake, to you and your team. And this took a lot of work and research and time and planning, and it's been administered extremely well, and will prove to be some really useful information for us. Delon as well. Jake, Delon, and team, thank you.
I had just a really quick question. Um, it's probably way too early, but any possible preliminary numbers on the feedback we might be getting this year, number of students are opt out? Do we know anything at this point this year compared to?
I haven't looked at the numbers yet. I just, I just haven't had time. But, uh, last year, we had about a thousand students take it out of about, uh, four thousand some. So, we had about twenty-five percent. But, um, this year, I, we're hoping for at least eighty to ninety-five percent.
In the last meeting, you did report on, on number of families technically opting out, is six to nine, something like that?
We had nine.
Nine, okay.
At my last look.
So, that's exceptional, right?
Thank you. Question?
Do they take it in a certain class? Like, where do they take it at?
They do, actually. Um, so, in elementary, they take it typically in their, just their homeroom class, their, uh, with their classroom teacher. Um, in the secondary schools, they actually take it during a certain hour. So, like at RAS, they took it, um, third hour during, uh, one of the school days. So, then they, um, the actual questionnaire asks them to respond to the teacher in their classroom at that time, um, so that we get broad feedback on a lot of different courses.
And we get the feedback back, how is it broken down? Is it, is it by, is there self-report some stuff? Or do we have it like, is it race or other things?
Yes. So, students actually, um, it's, it's a anonymous survey. They do add their, um, uh, their student ID number. So, then we can look at that student ID number to connect it to, um, any IEP, race, um, socioeconomic status, all those different things that we typically use to disaggregate our, our data. But we, we don't do it by name, and we try to like eliminate that from the, the survey as well when we put that data together, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both very much. Oh, sorry.
So, are the questions, from a language standpoint, different when it is for the elementary versus the secondary? So, how young are we talking?
Fifth grade. So, fifth, fifth and sixth grade are the, the only grades at elementary. So, they're very close. There is some difference between elementary and secondary. But mostly, they are, um, the STEM is written in a way that you can use comparative on a whole school. Yeah. Our whole district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We do not have any action items for the evening. To that study session report, Director Goggins.
Okay, uh, at the last, um, meeting, our study session, uh, the topic was around cultural responsiveness. And we watched, uh, a video put together, uh, where Anton Troyer talks. He is a professor of Bajimbingi and Ojibwe, um, and he's also an officiate of Ojibwe ceremonies, and he does DEI work. So, he came from a great perspective, and he really used, um, his Native American heritage and experience as a way of illustrating how schools may not be real welcoming for various groups. And, uh, I wanted to share a couple quotes with you that I found particularly interesting. Um, he was talking about that we teach, and this kind of struck with me, is we teach more about animals that don't live in Minnesota than do. I mean, kids know more about zebras and giraffes, but not as much about beavers and skunks. And I thought, oh, I never thought about that from that perspective. And that if we don't teach people, um, around something or someone, it's so much easier to be ambivalent about its destruction. Um, and we then talked in small groups about, um, uh, how our education system is designed or not designed for the needs of, uh, needs, uh, to educate our students, uh, ways that RAS is changing our education system and ways RAS is preparing students for the world they live in. And we got to see an, another, uh, clip from Anton, and here he's really bringing in his heritage to talk about students feeling welcome in school. And he mentioned that I could go to school for thirteen years to learn what I needed to be successful, and none of it was about me or my people. And, um, and that lack of motivation, or the lack of, of feeling connected and a part of it, um, is, is, is really a very key motivational concern. So, then we were, uh, kind of talked about individually with partners, um, what were experience, our experiences in school, and what experiences made us feel like you mattered? I mean, how, um, so we could kind of relate to that and relate to that whole concept of how we make sure that every student feels that they mattered and feels welcome in school.
Thank you, Director Smith, for putting that presentation together and guiding us.
That was wonderful.
Really powerful training.
You two have each other's back, don't you?
We do. Thank you, Director Goggins. Okay, that moves us on to board reports. Um, wondering if Treasurer Chu, if you wouldn't mind, leading off for us to see what you'd please?
Oh, goodness. Um, I think the thing that I would just mention is, um, some of us, being new officers for the school board, um, attended the MSBA training, for officers' training. So, I went to the one that was, well, there was a general one.
Yeah.
And then there's a part that is more for each of our position, whether a clerk, a treasurer, a chair. So, that was very informative in terms of kind of like some of the legal, legal framework of, uh, what it means to be a clerk. And then to also understand, you know, we sometimes take for granted in terms of like, um, how, how it works here in, in Roosevelt. And then you hear others, smaller districts, and what they have to do to kind of like fulfill all those duties legally. So, I thank you, Michelle. I thank you, seriously, right? That's all of us. Thank you, uh, to, to Sherry. Uh, it's just that we have such great support from the school district to do some of the work, to make sure that we meet our legal obligations. So, thank you. Yeah.
Uh, I, along with, uh, Director Clark and Assistant Superintendent Sonic, attended the annual MSBA, and this year, joined MSBA, MASA, Minnesota Association of School Administrators, uh, Legislative Day at the Capitol. So, there was pretty well attended, probably a hundred and fifty people in the room. And there were two panels. The first panel made up of state senators, the second made up of state representatives. And, uh, the MSBA and MASA executive leadership had put together a set of six or seven questions. And then they asked each panel to get their response and their reaction, so we could kind of hear what they had to say. They were asked about their support for things like a two percent budget increase. Their support for, um, changing or clarifying, um, seat time and what that means in instructional days versus instructional time, and allowing more flexibility. And it was interesting, um, e- e- like on the two percent, either everybody either said, yes, we're for it, or said, well, maybe. And the seat time, it was like, either yes, we're for it, or well, yeah, we could be for it, but we gotta look at that because, you know, I think you had a couple of them that were still very much, uh, school is about reading, writing, and arithmetic.
Yeah.
And what are you doing, all this other crazy, weird, innovative stuff for? So, uh, right, I might, that, I think that's accurate. So, it was just interesting to hear them. It was a little, um, dissatisfying in that there was no interaction at all. I mean, they just answered their questions, and then they ran out to their respective caucuses. Uh, so, um, we just kind of heard their, their, what they said without a chance to really, you know, talk with them or chat with them. But it was interesting, you know, at least to see, and at least they came, and they heard. I think, um, MSBA, uh, the, the, both the MSBA and MASA lobbyists at the end kind of capped everything emphasizing that if there's one thing that they'd like, every school board and MASA member distressed their representatives and their senators across the state, it's the, it's the REED Act funding. That was number one. Do it, increase it, improve it, and make it re attractive. So, even more than two percent, that was the thing, is if you, if you only have time to put one ID in their head, do it. And I think I heard something very interesting too, and I'll close on this. Uh, keep doing it, keep doing it, keep doing it. You do, if you do it, if you're there on Tuesday, and you said the same thing on Monday, say it again on Tuesday. If you're there two weeks from now, say the same thing. And the reason was very interesting to me, which of course, once you hear it, it's because the senator and the representative may be the same, but the staffs have a high-level turnover. And it doesn't make it to the ear of the legislator generally in any kind of coordinated way, unless it comes from the staffer through the staff. And so, it may be you have an intern or a staff person or something that is really on board with you. You go back next month, they've gone on, there's somebody new. Just have to keep hammering that message again and again and again, more to the staff that support them, to get that message up and keep it bubbling up. So, that was it.
Thank you for being there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, um, reiterate both what was said about the training, as well as the MSBA day and MASA day. Um, just a quick update on nine sixteen. Um, they gave a presentation about their, where they're at with the REED Act, and the curriculum that they chose wasn't one of the approved curriculums, but they're gonna wait until May to see if any additional gets added there. Um, they also provided us with the annual report, um, that they give every year. And then we also had a presentation on, um, career in technology education. About a hundred of our students attend, um, at Century College there. That was a good presentation on two of the programs. It was, uh, Entrepreneur Travel and Social Media Marketing Program and the EMT Program. So, they both were good programs, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
Yesterday, I got to attend with, um, a board member, formerly Johnson, Bertus, whatever, and Superintendent Lake. Um, a NPR News with Angela Davis podcast recording at the high school. Um, they had a panel of three of our teachers and three teachers from other, that were spread across different districts. Um, and Marley Matha Lagundi and James Darlow and Amy Wesland, Wesland did a really excellent job. And, um, it was just exciting to hear in, in this presentation, because it was all about, you know, so many districts are just starting to, um, have to take on ethnic studies. But of course, uh, we have been doing absent narratives for over ten years and trying to incorporate that into all classes, not just social studies. And then also we talked about, you know, seven years ago, that the American histories, the US history through African-American lands and history uncensored were added, which are around ethnic studies, and more recently, soci- sociology of race, class, and, and gender, and how the enrollment has grown. That this is a elective class, but the interest in it just continues to grow. And we had two students on the panel, five students, Evelyn Sago and Madison Lowe, who did a wonderful job. They both were in the sociology, sociology, race, class, and gender, um, classes. And, um, it was fascinating to talk, because, you know, we hear a lot of, um, concern about, you know, you know, forced, uh, or, you know, indoctrination and uncomfortableness in the class. And the kids were, um, really talking about how that they weren't seeing that, but they really, the teachers provided a great framework so that people could deal with those uncomfortable conversations. And that was where a lot of the learning occurred, is having those and having a place where they could have those brave conversations. And, um, the young woman who is a, a person of color said it was so important to see myself in the curriculum. Um, and, and that was so powerful. But it was just a wonderful thing. And as of Thursday morning, the podcast is supposed to be available. It's less than hour. Would strongly, uh, recommend that. I think you would find it interesting and worth your time. Um, uh, this afternoon, I attended my first senior council meeting. Um, we haven't been, um, I hadn't known when they were occurring, so I've missed many of them. Um, but, uh, this was great. Um, and, uh, they have a group that's very dedicated to trying to, um, provide opportunities for our seniors. And, uh, they were actually working on a survey of, to go out to seniors, you know, that listed the various things we have and what other, um, some other possibilities, some other ideas, asking for soliciting for feedback, et cetera. Um, and they had a real robust conversation about really the need for a grief support group, um, for our seniors in addition to a caregiver support group, which is quite different. Um, and something that's ongoing that, um, seniors could do, and they're exploring, uh, what would be involved in that and how they would go about that. And they've got a, um, kind of a charter that they put together of what their role is and what their objectives are, and, uh, to kind of provide clarity to all the memberships. Then I don't know that everybody gets a chance to look at the listservs this last week. And I just, there was, it was something I just couldn't pass up sharing with others. Uh, three of the principals talked to the impact on literacy of, of the work that's been being done this year. Um, and Central Park, Principal Sutton reported, half of the teachers, uh, report the new curriculum has had significant or very significant change to their literary instruction. And they are feeling more comfortable with the curriculum as they teach it longer. And they're currently completing assessments, uh, uh, screening assessments and fast bridge and across many of the schools, it sounds like. And from fall to spring, they saw sixty-five percent of the kindergarten students made typical growth, and twenty-two percent made aggressive growth, which is eighty-seven percent growth. and twenty-two percent made aggressive growth, which is eighty-seven percent growth. And the Falcon Heights reported for, they also did the fast assessments. They've seen double-digit increase in students in all the grades one, two, three. And the percentages were just really impressive, as did Edgerton. And they had, the second graders who completed it and they had a seventy-three percent growth. I mean, it was just, you know, we've talked a lot about the REED Act, we've talked about literacy, we've talked about this. And I just, I just thought, wow, this was really some powerful data if in case anybody isn't on those list serves was worth sharing with the group. I, I'm the liaison for the middle school and I got to sit down with Principal Cook this last week. And we talked about things that are really going well and, and, and the challenges that are facing the district going well. It's the DSI program has really made huge progress. And he was saying a big shout out to Lordis Flores Hansen because finding teachers that could both teach the language and the subject is very hard. And she really put in a lot of effort to make that really work well for them. And how important and valuable Abbott has been to the school. As well as they're, they're doing a intentional effort of every month, really doing a positive activity, like a pep rally, a dance, et cetera. And that has just been really well received by the students. And, and the biggest challenge is really around mental health and the students, you know, really having more needs than ever. And he's very excited because evidently their numbers allow for Dr. Lake and Assistant Superintendent has indicated they get increased resources for next year to decrease class size and invest in student services. And there's just such a great need, so that's really a valuable and powerful thing. The other thing I asked him, you know, was there something you think the board should be aware of? And one of the things he's concerned about is the impact of social media. And, and he sees often the school name being used and they actually try to track the different medias. And when the school name is being used, they try to report the issues, staff and administration. But sometimes the provider will oblige, but oftentimes not. And that causes some real issues in school. Especially over the weekend, things that are exchanged on social media and then they come on Monday, you know, with concerns. And so that was something that he mentioned would be interesting for us to be aware of.
I'm just going to piggyback a little bit on the, the NPR podcast. On Thursday it'll be available also on YouTube, so it was also videotaped. So, record, video recorded showing my age. All right. Yeah, so I will also just reiterate, the kids were, the students were amazing. The, the, it was, it was also amazing work by, by our teachers. You know, personally, it was, it, it felt like the completion of a circle because I've been working on ethnic studies for the last three years. And it was just really nice to be on, on this side of it. And, and really the, the things that we have been doing at Roseville area schools were the things that I brought to the Social Studies Standards Review Committee. And it was just helpful to be able to see all these other groups, these other students and the other teachers are doing some of the same things in a different way. And that, that's cool too. And it's like this, you know, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what this looks like for us in the, in the next couple of years. Had the opportunity to attend my first district curriculum advisory committee. And I will have to say Chair Anderson, I do understand why you've kept that one close to you for so long. Hattie had a great time. And spent only actually a very, very small amount of time actually looking at a, a new coursework. But that was just, that was okay because we had a, a really nice discussion about REED two point oh. And Roseville's implementation of the REED Act as we know it, you know, today. So we had Dr. Busman, teachers Jovida Hernandez and Cameron Rackey, who taught my kids how to read. So just, you know, absolutely great. Looking forward to my, my, my next meeting. Attended the Fire Bears Robotics Open House. And that was at Roseville area high school. And that team is getting ready for a, another run over at Minneapolis. At the beginning of the year, there's a, they, they called RMI, R, MRI, it's a, it's a Minnesota Robotics Invitational. We, we will have it again in the fall. And I'm just letting folks know now to get your tickets now so, because they'll be gone and you'll be upset. And you'll say Curtis, can you get me in? I'm like, I can't get you in, sorry. So, look at all these people. So, but these, these folks are passionate about what they do. And Ben, who was here earlier, has been doing robotics for Fire Bears for pretty much his entire time at Roseville area high school. So I'm not saying that if you join robotics, you will be a national merit scholar. I'm not, not saying that either. So, but no, it's been a good week. Looking forward to a little time off coming up for everybody, sure everyone is.
Awesome. Glad you're on that. I always look forward to the DCA team meetings. Representative on that now. Thanks Curtis. Just a few things, as Rose and Manix alluded to, attending, you guys attended the MSBA Officers Training in Line. Had the opportunity to go in person up in St. Cloud. The morning sessions reviewing the open meeting law, statutory duties of officers, then the fabulous breakout sessions for chairs and vice chairs. And I was, I, I have to say, I was always proud to say that I was chair of a high performing board. Because I, I think we all know, but I heard plenty of stories, there are not high performing boards, folks. I heard that loud and clear with questions that, that I, I heard from a lot of the officers. And you're right, there are clerks in greater Minnesota and school districts who have to run the elections. Who have to do all kinds of things. I can't imagine what they have to do besides their, their daily jobs, so. But I, I, I was glad to have attended that to keep growing and developing my role of chair. This past week we had a meeting of the District Safety and Security Team. One of the main things we did is we broke into groups to review policy five twenty, our student discipline policy. We're gonna be just one of, I think several groups are gonna be looking at this important policy. I think it's a great idea, you know, trying to answer questions like what parts of the policy are working as intended and what could be better. But I think that was a great exercise to be going over that, that policy. Right before the meeting, I had, I had an opportunity along with Superintendent Lake to attend Central Park Elementary STEM event for families and students. Great STEM activities in the media center and the Spark Lab was, was open. I, I love visiting the Spark Lab, an opportunity to speak to the Spark Lab Lead Teacher Sarah Rainey. It is, it is such a, it's a joy to watch the kids. It really is a spark. And again, I'm reminded that it's a jewel. It's a jewel, the jewels again, another jewel that this school district has. But I had an opportunity to talk to Sarah and look at the kids in the Spark Lab and, and families interacting. And last but certainly not least, as Director Johnson was alluding to, Roseville area schools, this is a spring break reminder, next week, I hope everybody has a restful and safe break. Please, safe travels, everybody, no matter where you're going or if you're staying at home for a staycation. Restful and safe break, everybody.
And Harambe will keep the learning going. They are in session.
I was gonna say, that is a.
They're in session. Yeah. Thank you Chair. Good evening. I'm going to start my report with a quote from John of Salisbury. "We are like dwarfs sitting on the shoulders of giants. We see more and things that are more distant than they did, not because our sight is superior or because we are taller than they, but because they raise us up and by their great stature add to ours." I read this quote tonight as this past Friday morning, our very own Naisita Thomas, Director of Student Services, was formally awarded the Minnesota Association of Special Educators Leader of the Year Award. In her speech, Naisita humbly thanked the leaders who came before her, specifically the importance of black female mentors in her life, her family, and the job of working in an organization that now prioritizes being an anti-racist school district. Thank you Director Thomas for your leadership and thank you for now serving as a mentor for those who follow in your footsteps.
Speech, speech.
Finally, I'd like to publicly acknowledge and recognize our Roseville area high school black student union students. Two weeks ago, this group held a cultural convening where dance, song and spoken word were shared. The show was brilliant and our students should be celebrated. The events that took place following the show involved young people not identified as attending ROS. It was an unfair connection to our student population. We'll continue to always shine a light on our district cultural celebrations and our cultural wealth. Our student and family diversity in Roseville area schools is a strength that we will always cherish and honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Dr. Lake. All right. If there is no further business before the board, we stand adjourned.